Thanks for coming. The time is now one o'clock. I'll call the meeting over. Welcome to our October seventh meeting.
The wishes to the flying, the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, on mission, under God, in this world, to be just as well.
Okay, at this time I'll open a public hearing to vacate right of way. So this is a request for a vacation on Linker Road at the intersection of Lynn Street. Is there anyone here today who would like to come forward and speak about the road vacation?
Good morning Commissioners. So Brad Allen, the Lilly County engineer. This is Dan Ambiglio. The right of way question is at the intersection of Linker Road and Lynn Road on the west side of Legions. And as we've discussed previously, the road no longer follows the planned right of way. This petition proposes to basically vacate part of the right of way where it's not following, rededicate the right of way. And so we have all the surveys and all the, we have the petition and the ordinance.
So in this action, there's, there's two steps, right? There's the vacation and then the dedication of the right of way. Okay. And is it same property owner?
One of the two petitioners is the property owner that will be dead.
Okay.
We did it as a joint petition, but to join up with us.
Okay.
What's being vacated about both of their properties and is combined with petition.
If you don't mind, sir, could you come forward and introduce yourself just for the, for the minute?
Yeah, Dan Ambiglio, I'm the attorney for the two petitions.
Okay.
We did it as a joint petition and they live side by side in the area that a bus there's. It's two, two sections that have let both their properties around.
Okay.
It was actually a little dirt road, sliver of road that came off of Linker. That's really how it's been used or anything other than frankly people like my client who just needed to curb off of Linker a little bit to get to the driveway.
Okay. We are so in public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? Okay, here and none. I'll close the public hearing and ask for your pleasure.
Is there an ordinance number?
It will be ordinance 2024 dash twelve.
I move to approve ordinance 2024 dash twelve as presented and waive the second meeting.
Okay, I do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hands. Oppose the same and that passes unanimously. Now, thank you.
So just clarify that those are the ordinance to vacate and then we will have to do a de-dedication.
And then there are, Brad, there are two other documents then, right?
The surveys.
So we have a deed of dedication of the right of way here. And then we have the petition of their base portion here.
So the, I think the ordinance is a result of.
The ordinance will be all encompassing for those other documents.
Yeah.
That same right here.
Yeah. You approved the deed of dedication. Now it just needs to be executed in court.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have Josh Schmidt, our veteran service officer with an update.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Josh Schmidt, County Veteran Service Officer. Just here to give an update of what's been going on since I've been, since I've taken over the office. So as of starting April first until present day, we've helped approximately or talked to and met with approximately 200 veterans since then. Ranging anywhere from disability benefits claims to survivor's pension to general questions of just hey, what do I need to do about this or where can I find, you know, this answer or everything like that. There's been a lot of walk-ins lately, which I think is a good thing. Now that the office has shown that it is open full-time and people, hey, I've seen the door open. I just want to swing in and say, hey, or hey, I got a question. You know, always happy to help anybody that comes through. Stay and talk with them for quite a while, which I thoroughly enjoy. There's been a few events that I've gone to. I've been to the American Legion in Cherabusco for their monthly meeting, introduced myself, gave out some cards. You know, informed them. That was probably one of the first things I did with them to let them know that the office was full-time. Did a event at the Columbia City American Legion for the Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home Event where they had a bunch of Vietnam vets come in. They gave them a DVD, like a yearbook, basically what it was. Was out at the four H here for a little bit, got to talk to a few veterans out there as well. And then was also at the Columbia City High School Men's Soccer Game during their Military Appreciation Game. Which we did a fundraiser to support the Honor Flight, which we raised enough money to get one guardian or one companion to go on that flight. They felt sure they wanted to try to do two this year, but you know, one's better than none. So future things, October, there hasn't been much yet that I'm going to be doing. November, I have had people reach out to me to come up on Veterans Day to do some, you know, speak at some events, do some dinner type things, stuff like that. So I gotta try to see who's and what time and who really wants to, you know, me to be there. And then in December, funny you sent me that thing, the reflying thing. I've been contacted by Gary Bird prior to that. He spoke to me about doing that and also being the one who's going to be laying the Army three MP at the ceremony. So I'll be out of that. We're also possibly talking about moving from the second floor to the first floor with EMA down in the old health department, which would thoroughly help our veterans who are, you know, have a hard time walking. A lot of them get up there and are out of breath even over around the elevator upstairs. So I think that'll help out a lot. If we moved down into that area logistics-wise, it wouldn't be anything any different. Just be a matter of seeing hover and stuff. Anything between us and EMA. So other than that, that's pretty much all I've got for right now. Just plugging away.
Great.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
So you're going to be working on Veterans Day?
Possibly, yeah. Just doing some speeches and whatnot. There are, you know, there's been a couple that wanted me to kind of give a presentation on some of the new benefits that have come out to some of their veterans and the AM vets when we asked if I'd want to come down to South Whitley and they were having a dinner if I wanted to make a few remarks or something like that. So.
Well, maybe if you're working on Veterans Day and you aren't a veteran, maybe you could have him be allowed another day off if we'll be working on that account that day.
Yeah, we could.
Sounds good. Yeah.
Anything else for Josh? Well, thanks for everything.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
No, great. You've been a veteran. You've helped me and I'm here for things in the community. I think that Julie Jensen has something to say as well, so.
I do. First of all, I want to thank the Commissioners for making Josh's position full-time. It was a much needed benefit for the Veterans of Whitley County. But on top of that, Josh has been a tremendous asset to the Veterans Treatment Corps. I can't say enough good things about what he's added to that team, well, also what he's added for the participants in that program. So thank you, Josh.
That's where I go.
Oh, yeah. We're huge. I love the job and it's one that I've not forgotten getting up in the morning and go do.
Good. Nice. I can hear that.
Thanks. Next up, we have Brian Katz from the Highway Department for the 2025 Highway Annual Pay Notice.
Just here to get the annual signature or?
Has everyone had a chance to review that? As you can see, it requires just the signature of the chairman. Any, any, any changes? I know you've had a chance to review, Andy. Anything?
Sure.
Anything different that we should highlight?
I don't think so. So the only difference from last year is everything's included on the first go-round.
Yeah.
Good. Get it all done prior to end of the year. Us and everybody that has. Good. Should have had a little time for vendors to keep the business.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve the notice and allow Commissioner Banks to signify with a signature.
Motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Oppose the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Paul Awurin for Addiction Recovery Fund Ordinance Approval.
I'm here to once again request approval for another grant. This is to request your approval specifically for an ordinance to establish the Addiction Recovery Court.
So this will be ordinance number 2024 dash thirteen. Any questions for Paul?
I'm none.
I'm moving for ordinance 2024 dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your hand and oppose the same and that passes.
Wait a minute.
Okay, we have an amendment after the vote. So what do I do with that?
Just, just, just re-vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So you accept the amendment?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I'll call for a second vote. All those in favor raise your right hand and oppose the same and that passes.
And just real quick, we're just at the beginning development stages of this program. As you know, Judge Renshaw will be the supervising judge. Julie Jensen Kelly has volunteered to serve as the coordinator for at least the first year. I will be responsible for all the fiscal management. So this grant is just to find a position for an assistant.
Very good.
And just here, my data facility work that must be done by bands just to.
Thank you.
I didn't bring my glasses. Okay, next item on the agenda, Cindy Doolittle. Account discussion of polling location amendment.
First, I want to talk about the polling locations. A couple of weeks ago, we received a phone call. They forgot to tell us we couldn't use their facility. It was Tri-6 Baptist Church. After Jessica and I drove around all over, you know, northern part of the county, we decided to move that precinct to the Thorn Creek Fire Station. We were thinking about moving it to the Remnant Church, but they would have, were afraid that they're going to go all the way to their polling location and be upset when they. So I have a feeling we're probably going to get a lot of angry voters, but there was nothing we could do about it. So we are sending out postcards to 800 voters. I'll be publishing it in the newspaper and then putting it on social media. So the election board met and they signed a resolution. They thought that was the best solution. So I'm just here to see if you agree and if you would sign the revise.
And as you had mentioned before too, it was difficult to find another location that was ADA compliant or, so we understand the difficult position that you were presented with.
Well, and, and we can use schools and we can say we want to use that school and they have to allow us, but at this short notice, usually they close the school. So the school score is not an option.
Is that the right resolution, Cindy?
244 dash ten.
That is the resolution then.
Definitely. That one, I'm just showing your county election board.
Oh.
Voted on that. And then the new notice, I believe you have, that just needs to be signed. Well, here, I can give you this.
So.
That I think was just for.
Yeah.
And then the first page of that is the.
Signed today, but the remainder of that.
It's the second page there.
So we are just approving the updated locations.
I'm moving to approve those requests.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, second, is ready for a discussion. And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand and oppose the same and that passes. I imagine that's going to put you further behind on postage.
Yes, we just got the postage. Yeah. We just got the postage. So as soon as you sign this, Jessica is going to get those postcards out probably tomorrow. So. And then I have one more thing that I need to bring to your attention. Okay, in 2022, okay, there's an attorney from out of state that represents a company and they garnish defendants' wages and it gets put toward a case. They were sued. However, in 2022, there was a wrong attorney on this case. So the funds went to this wrong attorney. And this attorney's office is from Illinois. Okay, I was made aware of it in 20, December of 2023. So a year had passed and I was made aware of it. I have been trying to get this corrected for, since December of 2023. The attorney from Illinois will not return the funds that went to the man there. It was around $311.13. So tomorrow I'll be going to counsel. I have money in my budget. I just want to pay this because I don't want, you know, them to come back and I don't, they suggested, State Department of Counsel suggested that I contact the county attorney to try to get this back to us.
Have you talked to the attorney and he flat out refused?
I have said, you can't really talk to anybody. It's a big company. Like, so I've been emailing, I sent a certified letter stating I'd be turning it over to the county attorney and they will not respond. They quit responding to emails. So I have all my documentation.
It just doesn't seem economical to turn it over to me for 300 bucks.
I know.
Report them to the Illinois Disciplinary Commission or Association.
But I have money in the budget. At this point, I keep getting emails for the attorney that this is supposed to go to. So I want to get them paid. And I have the money in my budget. So I was told that I need to go to counsel tomorrow to get approval and then you would need to approve the claim. So I just wanted you aware.
Yeah, thanks for that. Yeah, we support you on that.
And 28 years since I've been here, it's never happened. Not that we haven't made mistakes, but this hasn't. That's all I have for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Brad Allen. And Special Safety Call, Financial Commitment.
Yes. Thank you for considering this. I know it's late notice. This grant is kind of a, came up with from Indot late this year. It provides funding to install special systemic safety improvements. These are projects that require a little development engineering and can be constructed within one to two years. I worked with Ryan on kind of the best thing for our buck for this, this special grant. The best work type for it. We decided the striping would be the best use of it. And we then came up with a list of roads which is shown on the map that I included in the packet. We also talked in friends, the funds can come out of Highway, Highway Town. That would cover it. There was a change after I sent out the letter due to some last minute cross lines with Indot last week. Because the source of the money is technically federal, we have to either consider helping the construction inspection or get certified to do this. We're not currently certified. We'll try to get certified, but in case we don't, I added in 15% rough estimate for construction inspection. That changes the amount on the letter from our commitment of $14,413.50 to $16,575.
I do have new, what are they called? What's the process for us becoming certified?
I saw that email 10 minutes before this meeting.
Okay. Is that something that you would use in other instances if you were approved or?
Only if we got other related projects. So this is the last piece. The application has been cleared to permit it to do on the, no. Do this.
So we could do an approval after we see the 16,000. What, what is that number again?
It was 16,575.
No way we'd know about that. Sorry. That's going to be 14,000. 16,573.
I'm moving to approve this request for our local cost share of, our local share of the cost for application number 15588. Not to exceed, our commitment not to exceed $16,575.53 as presented.
Second.
Okay, I'm a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? And now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hands. Oppose the same. She carries the hands. Signed and updated company.
And then there was the second thing that I think was brought to your attention last week. And I apologize for not making it in the packet last minute. And that was the agreement with Engineering Resources Incorporated to do the design work of replacement of Bridge 51 on the previous. The agreement has incorporated all of these red lines and it's been signed by ERI. As soon as we have this signed, we can get them to proceed and start their work. This will put preliminary plans January of next year and depending on the DNR permit, final plans February 26. And other than that, this agreement shows a loan sum fee of $86,310 in my five-year plan under the suit, almost $200,000.
We received that agreement by email. Andy's had a chance to review it and accepted it. So I would entertain a motion for us to approve that. Of course, I don't have a physical copy that I can sign until after the meeting, but you've got a copy, you're on.
So I'm moving.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand and oppose the same and that carries the hands.
Thank you very much. Sorry again for that last.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have Nathan Dilger with some plat approvals. Okay, just one.
Just one today. So this one is a one lot flat being named Lee Acre. It is located off of Anderson Road, just west of Sheldon Road. Coincidentally, somewhat coincidentally, off the same parent tract as the one lot flat that you saw at the last meeting, which was located off Sheldon Road. So if they do any more plating or platted lots, they'll need to seek rezoning, which is, this is a lake area. They're applying to a lake residential. So I wouldn't be surprised if they saw that or sought that. So you may be seeing a rezoning if they want to do additional platted lots in the future. But as for this one, this is a pretty standard one lot flat. This one does include right of way through Anderson Road as well as easements. Was approved at the finding commission at their September meeting.
A motion in a second to approve Lee Acres. Any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hands. Oppose the same and that passes.
Here for you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Regional Sewer District Agreement. This is a sub-grant agreement using ARPA dollars to support future Phase Two for the county regional sewer district. This Phase Two project is for areas near Cherabusco. Can't cite exactly where, but it was part of the plan for this year, but the sewer district was not approved for the state revolving loan fund. So they didn't get their funding. And as you all know, it was part of our ARPA agreement ordinance from the very beginning to support the sewer district with $1 million. So what they've asked and what we've approved in the sewer district meetings is this sub-grant agreement where essentially if they don't get funding from the state revolving loan fund in 2025, the money then reverts back to the county. And then we would, of course, have to reallocate those funds and it needs to be spent by the end of '26. But when, when it comes back, it would allow for it to not be earmarked somewhere else by the end of this year because it's already earmarked to the sewer district. So did I do a good job at all?
Yeah. I mean, they will find out probably until July and August of 2025. So you have to, you won't have a ton of time to, you know, reallocate those funds, but you'll have some.
And by doing this, by supporting them in this and having this local match, it's more likely in 2025 that they'll receive the funding from S, S state revolving loan fund. So the question is, how would you like to move forward with the state and local fiscal recovery funds sub-grant?
I move to approve this agreement as presented.
A motion in a second. Are there any further comments? Hey, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand and oppose the same and that passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the 40 OS contract. So we've been with 40 OS, I believe, two years. And I've heard nothing but great things, but the time has come for us to renew the contract. I'm sure you guys have had a chance to review, but the question here would be, do we choose the three-year base term or the five-year base term? And of course, with the five-year, there is a nice price break.
Yeah, I'm of the opinion that the incentives on price break you mentioned are significant enough that it's well worth it in our, it's in our best interest to. significant enough that it's well worth it in our, it's in our best interest to approve option two, the five-year base term as presented. Make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that passes. The next item on the agenda is the micro post proposed agreement for road improvements. Is there anyone here?
No, but I can speak to it. They came, it was last meeting or meeting before that, about wanting to make some expansion of the roadway because it's turning radius truck and I think we were generally agreeable to it. And I just put together an agreement that says they're responsible for, they'll indemnify us if anything goes wrong. And they'll build it to the county specs because ultimately they'll hand it over you when it's all done. So they signed the agreement agreeing to all those terms and that's
Okay. I have that we have, oh, here it is. Any other questions on that? Yeah, I have a motion in a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hands. Opposed, the same, and that passes. Ryan, we appreciate your work with, with them and for bringing that forward to us. Looks like we have a few requests for facilities. I'll take the first one, it's for the Veterans Marathon. This will be held on November 1st and 2nd from 9:00 AM on the 1st till 3:00 PM on the 2nd. But I think typically what they do is they set up the day prior and then they have the marathon that following day. So minutes, it's the same, really the same ones that we received here over the year for the Veterans Marathon.
I'm going to approve that request as presented.
I have a motion in a second to approve. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
This request is from Lee Mergie. On behalf of the With the County Community Christmas Celebration. Their request is to use the With the County Courthouse in South Lawn on December 6th and 7th, a Friday and Saturday, in the purpose for the Christmas celebration community on the front lawn, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Proportional number of participants is 1,000.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And if you're saying that passes.
I have one here, from Police Garage 189. Used to truck retreat and pass out candy, utilized the courthouse parking on 10/26, which I just checked. That's a Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00.
I'm going to approve that request as presented.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that passes. Okay, next up is payroll and accounts payable claims approval.
I went on Friday afternoon and looked over payroll and everything looked to be standard and in order, so I will move to approve payroll.
Motion second to approve payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, that passes.
And at the same time, I also looked through accounts payable claims and what features I had, the auditor and the deputy auditor were kind enough to answer for me, so I will move to approve the accounts payable.
I have a motion in a second to approve the accounts payable. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the same, and that passes. And the last item that we have on the agenda is for our previous meeting minutes for September 16th.
Everything looks accurate to me, so I'll move it for a minute as presented.
I have a motion in a second to approve further discussion. And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That carries. There's a second.
Okay, full on page.
Okay, at this time I'll open up for public comment. Is there anything that anybody would like to add today?
Can I say something?
Yeah, please do. We come forward, so it's recorded.
You just did a facility request for the veterans. Is that, what date was that?
The first and second, I want to say. It is the first and the second.
The Saturday before election. Does that mean the roads will be closed because we'll be having people picking up supplies?
Yeah, that could be a problem, actually.
And absentee voting, it's, it's going to be big.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that we could probably find a compromise on that where they could set up on the opposite side. They typically do, they do the tent and they serve soup to the riders or whatever.
Okay.
We could probably do that on the west side of the, of the street. And then they just have a finished line at the intersection of the Urin and Line Street.
People, people will be coming in to pick up their supplies. And unfortunately, in the law, in the statute, it says they have to pick it up on a Saturday or Sunday.
Okay.
So they can't have their stuff before that.
Yeah. So when we, when we, we'll, we'll talk to Joey and Bert about it and then try to find a better
Okay.
Solution.
Just as long as we have some access for voters and
Yeah.
the supplies.
Yep. I'm sure.
Cindy, is the voter registration deadline passed for Indiana?
Today.
Today is.
Today is the last day and absentee voting starts tomorrow.
Well, if you're listening to this meeting, you better get on it.
Anyone else? Okay, Andy, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I sent last week, I didn't, I wanted to give you some time before we voted on a meetings, this ordinance about the contracts, execution requirements that Lou Statute, we talked about a couple of months ago. So we drafted an ordinance and policy. And you should have an email pulled over and maybe talk about it the next meeting. But I just wanted to point out that some section two has requirements. We added, one is specifically required by the State Board of Accounts that you have in there. And then some other things regarding approvals which are required. I added in that all county contracts may not automatically renew, renew as you, I've wanted to do in the past. A couple of other things. And then the one thing though, I think I'd like your input on is I put in here, we, we, there's county officers, which is a long list of, you know, your quarter, share, surveyor, treasurer is a long list in there. The deputy permitted to approve certain contracts under a certain dollar amount. Now that could be $1,000, it could be $20,000. I don't know, but it seems like every contract, the, you know, share enters into 500 bucks. You probably don't want to review everyone, so maybe just before the next meeting, think about, first of all, do you want that section in there? And second of all, what, what should, if you do, what do you want that dollar to be?
Okay. Kami, can you, can you make sure that's included in our bi-weekly special things? Tiffany, anything you'd like to add? Lisa, Rob, and I have nothing to add, so at this time I'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks for coming.